Town Council Meeting of June 24, 2014 to order. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all forms.
If the clerk could do the roll call, please.
Counselor Borgeson?
Here.
Counselor Costello?
Here.
Counselor Cohen?
Counselor Denunzio?
Here.
Counselor Clutt?
Here.
Counselor Marikini?
Here.
Counselor McDonald?
Here.
Counselor Nagel?
Here.
Mayor Woods?
Here. Thank you. Actually, I forgot to mention earlier that Counselor Cohen is not with us tonight. She's under the weather at home. Tried everything to do to get here, but she's just a little bit too sick. So, I'm sure she'll be watching it at a future point, if she isn't watching it already. And next is public participation. We are right back up to public participation. Anyone at this time care to speak to us? Mr. Bowles.
Gary Bowles, 28, Burden Lane, Newington. Lifelong Newington resident. I don't know if many of you realize it or know about this, but years ago, the parcel at the corner of Garfield Street and Willard Avenue had a lot of dirt dumped in there because it was very soft. And Newington was originally built on a swamp. And there's wetlands all over Newington. Milpon Park and the Milpon Falls were used in the primary occupation of the barrel stave production. And like I said, those falls and the pond were used in that production. So, if the building was to get passed, the referendum passed, and it was to be put there, you've got to be very careful because those wet -- once they're wetlands, they're always wetlands. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Padreco, did you want to come up?
Gail Padreco, 21, Isabel Terrace. I just feel like I am compelled to comment about something that I heard during the public hearing where several residents said that they received from a department employee with a vested and direct interest in the outcome of this project, used town resources and a mailing list to generate support and attendance at this public hearing. Regardless of whether it was this project or any project, that was inappropriate and unethical use of town resources. And I believe the employee should be spoken to, but furthermore, the department head should be disciplined for this type of activity and anybody who supported it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Rose Lyons, 46, Elton Drive. I forgot to mention this earlier, but it's probably better that I mention it now with all the other things that I had to say. I would like you to consider in your resolution changing some verbiage. I'd like to see it read, "Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $30,373,970 for town hall renovation and the building of a new community center." I think it would be more transparent and the voters will be able to see that this is not just a combination of a town hall and community center project. It's two separate things. It's the renovation of the town hall and the building of a new community center. And the same goes for anywhere else within that resolution that the words "town hall community center project" are used, especially for the ballot label for the question when we go to the referendum, whenever you may decide that would be. Thank you.
Hi, Madie Kenny, 53, Crestview Job Drive. I would like to expand on what Rose just said. Because I honestly do not feel this is a community center. There is no room -- every room has a label, be it dance, exercise, or whatever. A community center serves as a place where people can gather for private functions by renting it or other public functions. And this place does not seem to do that. I would respectfully request that it be called a Parks and Recreation Complex. That is just my consideration. And I also feel that we are a creative and an intelligent lot of people. And it is inconceivable to me that we cannot find a solution to finding some other way of not destroying Milpon Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wally?
Good evening again, Mayor, council members, and the town manager and our secretary, I guess. Good evening. With what everyone said earlier at the public hearing, it's true. And it just summed up, I think we have a lot better solutions here. When we're talking about making the hallways smaller, well, the center of that atrium makes the hallways look really small already, as opposed to that big open space with nothing going on. I think there's probably some, maybe smarter options available to this entire thing. The first one being allowing the public a lot more time to be informed about this project. And the next six weeks is not sufficient enough time for them to be able to do this. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Beth Delby, 0327 Walsh Avenue. I won't reiterate what I said earlier, but some things that came up in my mind afterward that I forgot to ask were, is there an allotment for furniture for this new building? I would imagine that would be a huge expense. Maybe we can use some of what we have, but I'm sure there will be many more needs. Also, has there been consideration given to when we disturb this old building? There must be asbestos, PCB, some type of issue that needs to be considered in terms of the additional cost that could arise when this project is done. And I'm wondering about the contingency fund for this project and how much will be in it? And will it be enough that if those issues should arise during construction, we can cover those easily? As other residents mentioned, the impact on wetlands, I too am concerned about that. And I hope that this council will take that into consideration in great detail. The email that was mentioned earlier, I received also. And at first glance, I thought, wow. First, I was trying to figure out why I received it. And then, as I read it, I thought, well, this is nice. It's a way to get people informed about the town hearing, the public hearing. It talks about the project in detail, what it would afford. The community center portion is really what it focuses on. And it talks in detail about what would be added and what would be offered in the new community center. I was fine with the email in terms of being more informative to the public until I got to the last paragraph. And I'm going to read it to you into the record. It says, "The presence of -- it says, 'We want to extend an invitation to all instructors, staff, coaches, and program participants to attend this meeting tonight.'" Just so you know, this is from someone in the Parks and Recreation Department. "It is not necessary for you to speak, but you are welcome and encouraged to do so. The presence of residents, instructors, and staff will help to show the public that there is support for this project, which will enable us to accommodate more community use programs and activities. We hope that you will consider attending tonight's public hearing and supporting this project." I won't say the person's name. I don't believe in publicly besmirching people. I don't know what this person's intent was when he sent this. But I am concerned that it was an effort to, you know, get -- gain public support for something by using town resources. And that shouldn't be the case. Informing the public is one thing. That last paragraph is the only part that I really took exception with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Woods, 82, Ivy Lane. Just a couple of things that I ran out of time for. First of all, I want to address the double pavilions at the -- at Milpon. There is two pavilions there at the moment. The gazebo is in great disrepair. It will be taken down. The new pavilion was, as well as the first gazebo, was donated by the Mandell family. The lion's share of that cost has been a donation from the Mandells once again. So, again, the gazebo will be taken down and hopefully moved to another location. It really depends on how the gazebo is -- holds up. It's in pretty bad shape. Just a couple of other things. I didn't have a chance to say how many people use the community center, the Mortenson Community Center. And from July of last year through May of this year, there were over 44,000 participants that come in through those doors. And in addition to that, the usage of the senior center and disabled -- senior and disabled center, Newington Public Schools are required for classes due to the limited space in the Mortenson Center. The demand at the Mortenson Center has never, in recent years, has not been met to any shape or form. There's always people that are looking to do more things. The new community center will give that some -- much more flexibility and opportunities for others to enjoy what some of these 44,000 participants enjoy now currently. I think that's all I'm going to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Next is consideration of old business. We have two items. And the first is a town hall community center renovation project. We have a bonding resolution, and we will also, after we discuss that and if we decide to vote on it, we will then refer the project to TP&amp;Z for what's called an 8-24 report. Deputy Mayor Costello?
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $30,373,970 for the town hall community
center project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $30,373,970, as well as establishing a date for a referendum. I would like to follow that by moving that we waive the requirement to read the full resolution.
So, seconded?
Motion made and -- excuse me. Seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Clutt?
I know it's a formality to apply for the 8-24, but I would like to know that if there's wetlands, and I'm not sure if anybody has the answer to this, underneath the field area that's proposed for the recreation, will that also be -- will that issue be forwarded to the Conservation Commission?
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Deputy Mayor? No. So, the item is now on the table to discuss, which is the resolution that all the counselors have in front of them. So, is there any discussion on the resolution as it stands right now? Counselor Clutt, you had your hand up first.
I'm going to yield to Counselor Denunzio.
Counselor Denunzio?
As far as the resolution stands, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Sure, go ahead.
And that motion -- that amendment to the motion is to hereby -- to put a proposed date for submission to the voters at referendum for Tuesday, November 4th, which is the municipal election.
Seconded. So, the motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I also have another amendment that I --
Yeah, we need -- yeah, we have to do this one first and then, yeah. I think there's going to be several. Any -- on the motion, correct?
On the motion.
On the motion.
Well, discussion on the motion? I mean, based upon what we've heard here tonight, I am not comfortable with the August date. I don't think I'm comfortable with November date either, so I'm not sure how we address that. But I certainly think we need to move it out of August, based upon everything that we've heard tonight. So, I'm not sure what the date should be, but I certainly don't think it should be in August. Now, so I don't know where that stands.
Counselor Clutt, on the motion?
Yes, on the motion.
I can hear it.
I would just like to say that a couple of weeks ago, at the town council meeting, I had made the comment that I believed that it was unfair to the public to hold this referendum in August. And I was -- it was suggested -- suggested by a Democratic council member that this wasn't Europe and it wasn't a ghost town. And it was reported by the Hartford Current that I received a strong rebuke by one of the council members. Well, I would like to just respond. I think the public came forward tonight at least seven to one. And if you discount those people that are related to some of the members sitting up here on the council, it would be more than seven to one of those who are opposed to holding this referendum in August. So, again, I strongly support holding this referendum in November when people that -- the numbers of people who generally come out for an election will have the opportunity to register their opinion on whether this should pass or not.
Any further discussion? Counselor Nagel?
I would like to concur that indeed by moving this to the November date, there are more people who do not have conflicts. Indeed, people will be more interested in expressing their opinion one way or another since there is another election, an election for other things at the same time. So, I think it is advantageous to the townspeople to take a vote on this referendum, no matter what other things may seem to have to be rushed because of it at that particular time. Thank you.
Counselor Denunzio?
Thank you, Mayor Woods. Just a couple of quick points behind why I feel strongly about putting this referendum on Tuesday, November 4th. First of all, we all know the cost and implications and how it's going to impact the people that live in -- that live in this town and pay taxes. And, you know, quite frankly, I was driving around town this past weekend, and, you know, it was amazing to me how many signs I saw, for sale signs outside on people's houses. And, you know, I think that's an indication a little bit that, you know, we've heard, you know, the concerns, you know, it's the tax, it's not just the taxes. But, you know, people are looking at other options out there. And I think by holding a referendum in November, we'll get a real -- we'll get a real good idea about how people feel about this project. And, you know, if they think it should pass, then, you know, let's maximize public participation in that capacity. Thank you.
Any other comment? Counselor Marikini?
I'd like to add that I'm not in favor of a November referendum date, in part because I want people to specifically come out to vote on this topic and this topic only. That, to me, will give me a good indication on how this town feels about this project. And although I probably don't agree with mid to late August, maybe sometime in September, we could get forward with that.
Thank you.
Based on the --
Counsel?
I'm sorry. Based on the comments this evening, I would simply echo the comments of Counselor Marikini.
Deputy Mayor, did you want to?
Yeah, I would just like to add to that. A November referendum, when you consider that it will take four, five, six months to do the construction design and get the project out to bid, I think the delay would be after, now we're in two and a half years of serious work with this committee. With construction costs certainly to go up, interest rates likely to go up, I think it would be a much more expensive proposition and almost -- I mean, the goal is to get construction started March, April. If we have a referendum in November, it wouldn't happen until the fall. I just don't think that's acceptable any -- under any conditions.
Counselor Clutt?
Yes, I'd like to respond to Counselor Marikini and Counselor McDonald's comment. You would be getting a vote on what the people feel separately, even if it's held in November because the question is on the ballot separately. So, people would go in and they have a line where they're going to vote for this. November would be for governor, lieutenant governor, and whatever else, state office. And then, there'd be a line for people to vote for what people feel on the referendum. In the worst-case scenario, people go in there and are more interested in voting for governor and lieutenant governor and may miss the question. That, to me, is the worst-case scenario. It isn't a matter of not getting people's opinion on -- separately on how they feel about the issue. And as far as the construction costs, we've already heard that it's not going to influence the cost of the construction. You know, we've waited, it's been pointed out, how long we've waited to hit the road with this project. I just do not agree. You're talking if anything else, you're, you know, if nothing more, you're saving the cost of going to referendum outside of a general election.
Just before we vote, I do believe it would cost more. And I believe I attended the same meeting as everyone else did, and I heard Mr. Moriarty say that it would cost more because what would happen is if we come out later in the year, we'll end up doing construction through the winter, and there will be general conditions in there. And I believe he's carrying 36 months. And if I remember correctly, and I believe I do, he thought initially if we came out in the spring, we would not probably use two or three of those months. If we came out in the summer, we would more than likely use those months. And there were about $50,000 per month for general conditions, far outweighing the cost of a standalone referendum.
With that, if I would ask the clerk to do a roll call vote, please?
And this is on the amendment only?
This is on the amendment only.
And the amendment only being?
The November --
November date.
The November date. That's the only thing we're voting on right now. November 5th, correct? That's fourth? Fourth?
Counselor Borgeson?
No.
Counselor Costello?
No.
Counselor Denunzio?
Yes.
Counselor Clutt?
Yes.
Counselor Marikini?
No.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Woods?
Yes.
No.
No.
And I did mean no.
He meant oh.
Is it a yes or a no?
My vote is no. I'm not in favor of the amendment.
So, I'd like to then make an amendment.
Clark has the floor right now.
I would like to move that we change the date of the referendum from August 19, 2014 to September 9, 2014.
So, seconded?
Motion made and seconded. So, now, the new date is September 9. Discussion on that date?
Well, actually, I believe that was the next motion we were going to make, correct? So, maybe we might be all in agreement.
If that's the case, maybe there won't be any discussion. Counselor Nagel?
Mike, just make a comment that indeed, while this does not meet the wishes which were expressed at the public meeting, it at least is a fairer time where people are not away on vacation. People who have to go at that particular time, school is back in session. But I understand correctly that that particular date, it's a half day of school, and therefore it would even make it more amenable if there are locations where there is voting on that particular day. So, I have no problem with the September date as being the 9th.
Okay. Any other comment? I don't want to -- Counselor Denunzio?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think September 9th, I think it will help as far as getting more participation. You know, it's the second, you know, school's back. People are back from vacation, kind of getting in the swing of things. I still think a November election, you know, really gives you a pulse and an indication of the type of projects moving forward. And everybody's so concerned about construction costs. You know, there's $30 million there. The contingency, we've had it explained to us, you know, pretty thoroughly. You know, the construction manager seems confident. You know, hopefully, that is the case. So, I'm just going to -- I do think that this helps calm come the concerns that we've heard here tonight. That's all I have. Thanks.
Counselor Clutt?
I think it's unfortunate that the will of the public is not going to be fouled here tonight. I think the --
[applause]
I think the public has made it abundantly clear as to when they think this council should be holding the referendum. And it's sad that it's not going to be that way. So, I want it known for the record that the only reason that I'm going to support this is because it is very clear that the November date is -- has gone along party lines and that it's never -- that as hard as we've fought to try to convince people to hold it in November, it isn't going to happen. So, at this point, I have confidence in people that are going to come out to vote, that they're going to do the right thing for the town of Newington. You know, we're just elected officials that are supposed to be representing what you folks want, not what we want, but what you folks believe is right. And I think tonight, you clearly stated that what, you know, over a seven to one margin, what you believe is right. And it's sad that we're not listening. So, for the record, the only reason I'm supporting this alternate date is because the will of the people is just not being fouled, and it's the only other option to get it -- get this passed.
Do a roll call vote, please. Again, this is for the September 9th date only.
Counselor Borgeson?
Yes.
Counselor Costello?
Yes.
Counselor Denunzio?
Yes.
Counselor Clutt?
Yes.
Counselor Marikini?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Woods?
Yes. Motion passes eight.
I have another motion I'd like to make. I would like to suggest that we --
I can't hear you, Maureen. Sorry.
I would like to suggest that we foul the recommendation of Ms. Kenny or -- and/or Ms. Lyons. And I would suggest that we take the word everywhere it appears in this resolution that it says "town hall slash community center," that it be replaced with the town hall, and I believe it was, and Recreation Building? Recreation -- Parks and Recreation Complex.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? I'm going to start. I will not support that motion, and for a simple reason. The structure right now was named, I think, back in the 80s, it might have been the 70s, for Elmer Mortensen, who served as first selectman, I believe, not mayor or mayor. I don't remember if it was mayor or first selectman. I think maybe it had been mayor. And also, as a state representative here. And it's named the Mortenson Community Center. That's the name of the structure, and I am not going to get involved in changing the name of that right now. Any other discussion?
Yes, I do.
Yes. Counselor Clutt?
I may be going out on a limb here, but I'd be willing to bet you if former Mayor Mortensen was here tonight, he would agree
He's not, though.
With the recommendation. And this has nothing to do with the name of, you know, what we're going to call it once the building is constructed. It's a matter of ensuring that the public understand that this is a Parks and Recreation Complex if we want to have a ceremony like we have done for former mayors and other parts of the building. You know, I think I understand why it's being labeled like this, but I do believe that the appropriate way would be to do, to follow the suggestion. that the appropriate way would be to do, to follow the suggestion of Ms. Lyons and Ms. Kenny. But, again, it wouldn't surprise me, because we haven't really fouled the suggestion of the public here tonight on much, so it won't surprise me if this vote, this doesn't get supported.
Any other? Yes. Counselor Borgeson?
Your constant pandering annoys me. Frankly, I'm tired of it. You're making this into a political issue. This is something that, as a town, as a town council, we have to take responsibility for getting this thing done. You're making it into a political issue, you're pandering, and I frankly, I'm a little disgusted with it. I think we should move forward on our vote.
You can do a roll call vote, please. Again, this is just on renaming the Mortenson Community Center to Parks and Recreation.
Oh, we're doing to vote?
We're going to do a roll call.
Okay.
Counselor Borgeson?
No.
Counselor Costello?
No.
Counselor DiNunzio?
Yes.
Counselor Clatt?
Yes.
Counselor Maricini?
No.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Woods?
No. Motion fails five-three. Now, you want to do the one just that we, as amended, move the resolution as amended?
I would like to move that we accept the resolution as amended, changing the date of the referendum from August 19th to September 9th.
So, seconded?
Seconded by Counselor McDonald. Any discussion on that? Do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Borgeson?
We're voting on the whole motion now, the whole resolution.
She called for a vote from Counselor Borgeson.
Yes.
We can't hear you, unfortunately.
I'm having trouble hearing you guys, too.
Oh, there you go, that was better.
We have great air conditioning, we just can't hear anybody in here tonight.
Counselor Costello?
Yes.
Counselor DiNunzio?
No.
Counselor Clatt?
No.
Counselor Maricini?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
No.
Mayor Woods?
Yes. Motion passes five-three. Next item is a referral to the TP and Z for 8-24 report. Counselor Borgeson?
Resolved that the town manager is hereby directed and authorized to submit a proposal for the Town Hall slash Mortenson Community Center renovation project to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission for its report in accordance with Section 8-24 of Connecticut General Statutes, as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Counselor Maricini. Any discussion? All those favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is an OPM grant, building bridges between youth and police programs. You doing that one, Terry?
Yeah. Is there any discussion, or are we just going to?
You got to read it first, and then we'll
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting there. Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby approves the acceptance of a grant of $10,000 from the Office of Policy and Management for purposes of funding of building bridges between youth and police program, and authorizes John Salomon, Town Manager, to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the town of Newington any and all contracts and amendments with regard to said grant.
And a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Nagel. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Nagel?
Just to mention that this program has been successful and has included, fortunately, grant money to help fund this building over several years, and should be continued, and I will be voting in favor of it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next is resignations and appointments. Anybody have any? No? Tax refunds, Counselor Maricini?
Resolved that the property tax refunds in the amount of $2,695.93 are hereby approved in the individual amounts, and for those named on the request for refund of an overpayment of taxes certified by the revenue collector, a list of which is attached to this resolution.
A second?
So, seconded?
Seconded by Counselor McDonald. Any discussion? All those in favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, as minutes of previous meetings, we have one, a regular meeting, excuse me, of June 10th, 2014. Myra's not here. She always does this.
I know.
Counselor Nagel, you do it as you'd like. In Myra's absence, I will. There are a couple of things. I have contacted the town manager's office and was informed that a certain part of the meeting, they were changing tapes, and therefore, there wasn't information there that I feel is vital, specifically under resignations and appointments. If you remember, there was a discussion about appointing Tom Bowen to, TPC as an alternate, and a lot of that discussion's been left out. But more importantly, I brought it up and discussed it with you, Mayor, and your comments are not included. But more importantly, when it came to the roll call, everybody's vote is listed except mine, so I would at least like to have my name included with the members, and that I voted in favor of Mr. Bowen being appointed as an alternate. Also, if I may do
Go ahead.
Can we group things together? Later on, in Section 10, I think, it has to do with reports from counselors, liaison positions, and whatever. It is stated that I gave a report on the damage to the library, when indeed, it was Counselor Costello who answered, who attended that meeting and gave that information. So, I think that duly should be corrected. And also, under that, I did report about NCTV buying equipment that was required, because they are going to compel to broadcast under HD mandates by the state and other agencies in the future, and that was eliminated from the minutes altogether. If I might make a note in connection with that conversation that we had in terms of Mr. Borman, that was not included, not included, and something that was alluded to. With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, you alluded that I chose not to contact Attorney Borman. I had contacted him. I had a personal thing that came up and could not see him before the town council meeting, and I have subsequently have met with him, just to set the record straight. Thank you.
So, there's a motion on the table to accept amendments as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor DiNunzio. Any further discussion? This is why I hate this table. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next is written oral communications from the town manager, other town agencies, and officials, other governmental agencies and officials, and the public. John, anything further?
No, Mayor.
Council liaison committee reports? Anybody? Public participation? Ms. Lyons?
Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. I want to thank Counselor Clatt for listening to what I had to say about the changing of the wording. I don't consider it pandering, I consider it listening. I would just like to point out to you that this Town Hall Renovation Committee started out just as a Town Hall Renovation Committee. As the time went on, these are the handouts we were given. Town of Newington, New Mortenson Community Center, and additions slash renovations to Town Hall. In your resolution to the Town Planning and Zoning Committee regarding the Section 8-24 referral, you're authorizing to submit a proposal for the Town Hall slash Mortenson Community Center renovation project. In your resolution authorizing an appropriation of $30 million blah blah for the Town Hall slash Community Center project, Mortenson is not even mentioned. So, let's just get consistent with what we're saying here. I think, I know what this is all about. We were shocked when these plans started coming out, and the Mortenson Center took top billing over the Town Hall renovations, and I think the public should be made aware of that. The other thing is, I have a memorandum that was handed out, I believe, at one of the Town Hall renovations or at a Town Council meeting, and this is from John Salamon dated May 9th, 2014. And it was a timeline. Town Hall, Community Center project, council, and referendum timeline, and it goes on. The date set on that particular memo was September 16th, 2014. We have now spent numerous minutes discussing, not only at the last Town Council meeting, partially, but also here, changing it from August to September, when in fact, in May, September was fine. I just don't understand. My other question would be, and once again, I'll reiterate it, how many referendums can you have to pass this project? Is there a percentage of people that have to vote on this project? And is there a certain period of time in between the referendums that the next one can be held? We might be in November if this keeps going on and on and on. As for the 43,000-plus people that use the community center, I read that figure in one of the Parks and Recs minutes. I just wonder, we're 43,000 people coming and going out of that community center, how they've gotten by me? Do we double-count the number of people that use it for different programs? Do we count the people that come in to watch the programs? From my understanding, from Mr. Till, that this new community center is not going to house all the programs that are now off-site. They're not all going to be under one roof. That was my first understanding, and I was kind of thinking, well, that's not a bad idea. Let's get it all under one roof. But then, when I started seeing zumba rooms and fitness centers, and then was told that the other programs will remain off-site, but this new community center will give the Parks and Rec Department an opportunity to offer more programs to other people and increase the enrollment in some existing programs, that's when I began to question the actual need for this new community center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Beth Delbuno, 327 Walsh Avenue. I have to say, I'm extremely frustrated and saddened by the turn of events this evening. Eight years on the Board of Ed and two years as a town counselor, we begged for public participation. Every budget season, every important hearing, every important decision that we made, we begged for public participation. Every PTA meeting I ever went to, I begged the public to come out and let us know how they felt. You had the public come out tonight and let you know how they felt. They spoke very clearly, not just about not wanting it in August, but about wanting it in November, when the majority of the people would be heard, and five of you just didn't listen. And I think that's really sad, and that is my own opinion. I was also disheartened by Counselor Borgeson's comments about Mrs. Clatt, Counselor Clatt's pandering. I'm not sure when representing the will of the people became pandering, but that's not the definition that I know of the word pandering. I thank Counselor Clatt, Counselor Nagel, and Counselor DiNunzio for listening to the will of the people this evening, and for having the courage to vote in the way that you felt strongly about, and in the way that represented the people that came out tonight and asked for that. In terms of saying that it's not, that Counselor Clatt was making this a political issue, everything that these counselors, that you do up here, and the mayor, everything that you do is a political issue, because as far as I'm concerned, the voters should be voting on what your decisions are that you make. Every vote that you take, every decision you make on behalf of this town should be a consideration when it comes time to vote. And so, everything you do is a political issue. No one's making it that. That's what it is. And that's why you're elected up there, to make those political decisions and decisions in the best interest of this town. And when you don't listen to those that are up here letting you know how they feel, it's disheartening and it's sad. And don't be surprised if you don't have the same amount of public participation next time, because people don't feel like you're listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi again, Patty Foley, 51 Crown Ridge. Apparently, we didn't have our ears on. Not only listening, but you didn't hear us speak tonight, many people extremely eloquently. I do want to make one note. I mean, you throw some numbers out there, I can go on all night. I can keep you here for days. But it said 44,000 people use it, and I use Parks and Rec. I'm a resource user. But one of the other resources that we haven't discussed is the fact that we haven't done what we needed to do to keep the library going. Half the building is closed down because it had a failure, because it is old, and it's still not part of this complex that we are all talking about, and it's been ignored. But many times, out of one side of our collective mouths, we talk about the jewel of Lucy Robinswell's library here in town, and then we kind of ignore it. I do ask that we start listening to the people here in town. They came out tonight. They took their time because they thought it was important to be here. Each one of them gave time that they can't have back, and I hopefully would hope that we would now start thinking about what the taxpayers are telling you that they are looking for. I thank you for the time and effort that was all put in, because I know what it takes to serve on boards. I know what it takes to serve the public. So, I do thank you, but I'd like to have your ears not listening, but hearing what they said. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
John Bashan, 56 Maple Hill. I think, you know, I said earlier that I hadn't been following this closely, so I'm trying to think of, trying to be productive and try to help out with the situation. So, I was thinking of some alternatives, and I heard one great one, and that was tear the gym that we have down now and rebuild it. There's probably some room to make that bigger. Use it for your swing space when you need it during the construct, you know, during the renovation of the Town Hall, but then tear the gym down completely. It's just a big giant shell, anyway. That shouldn't be that difficult. Reconstruct on that site. I think there's room to expand a little bit there. So, that's just one thing I wanted to throw out there. And I guess that's about it. But as far as the renovation of the Town Hall, absolutely. I don't think anyone's denying that that needs to be done. You might still be able to get some fluff out of it. You know, we talk about the wants and needs, so you could still go with that atrium design, possibly. You'll save a huge amount by not having to do a new gym or a new community center, or whatever, we're referring to that now. I really don't see a problem with that, with that language, either calling it a community center or a recreational facility. Community center seems like it's more applies when it's, you know, attached to this building, because it's part of the community. When you put it off-site, I guess, I don't know, it's kind of hashing words. But anyway, you might still get that, that kind of, you know, nice design, the atrium and all that, and still come in with, in a reasonable budget without, the worst part of it is that, that aspect of building in the park over there. I just think that's just, it's just the worst possible thing that could be on the plan, so, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome, Ms. Kenny.
Katie Kenny, 53 Crestview Drive. And I want to apologize, I should have said I would like it renamed the Mortenson Recreation Complex. I agree, that's a family that has been very important to this town. I'm going to start out, I'm a Democrat. I wasn't independent, but I did become a Democrat several years ago. To say that I am disappointed tonight in the rescheduling of the referendum would be a gross understatement. I think that this is a time of year, we're coming in where people's time is very fluid, their presence in town is fluid, be it going on weekends or in and out, whatever. I have decided to keep my current subscription so that I know what day it is. And I think to have put it into the beginning of September is denying the residents the opportunity to become as knowledgeable as they can. I have attended the meetings, and I still have questions. And I cannot imagine getting up to speed during this fluid time and then hitting the beginning of September. It's going to cost, I think it's around $26,000, but I'm not sure. It's going to cost, I think it's around $26,000, but I'm not sure. If we have that to throw away, why are we concerned about possible increase in construction costs? I, I just don't know. Because if it doesn't pass, when do we have the next one? Are we going to cram a square peg into a round hole, or are we going to step back and really look at what's going on? Thank you very much. And I do thank you for the time you've put in. I know I'm feeling quite grumpy right now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bowles.
Gary Bowles, 28 Burden Lane. I too am very upset about not having the referendum in November. The people here spoke loud and clear, and all of you need to remember that we elected you last year to represent us. We don't represent you. You represent us. You do as the people would like you to do, not as what you want to do. Now, as far as that community center goes, that gymnasium can, and I should have mentioned this earlier, that gymnasium can physically be torn down and rebuilt right on the same spot. There is an area to the east which houses the lobby and the doors, and then there's a, like a little parking area in front. That could be expanded to the east and very well accommodate the new gymnasium. And I still say that that community center and the gymnasium and all the enhancements could be done for a lot less than the $9 million price tag for this new community center that possibly is going to be built on what I said earlier is technically wetlands. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next is remarks by counselors. Counselor Borgeson.
I just want to bring up something that I heard this week and actually went and saw, something positive, actually. I received a call from Goodwill Industries, Ann Corcoran, who actually runs their job development services and networking services and teaches people for free how to get jobs. I talked to Karen at Human Services. She has been using that. So it can be used through Human Services, but I just wanted people to know, because I never knew this, that Goodwill does have a job development center right in their location in Newington. I went in there last week to look at it. There were five or six people sitting at computers looking for jobs. They were getting skills training, how to do their resumes, people over 50 years old that were looking for jobs, they were doing, doing things with that. So I think, I just want people to know about it. Again, our Human Services people are using it, but you don't have to go through Human Services. You can go directly to Goodwill, and I think it, the economy that we're in and the people that are struggling, it's an important thing for people to know about. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, Castell.
I just want to explain to everybody something I feel very strongly about. There are two schools of thought with regard to representative government, and one that has only been, the only one that has been expressed here tonight is the one that representatives are obligated to do what the majority of their constituents think that they should do. The other school of thought is that you elect your representatives to simply exercise their best judgment. If you, in the end, and American history, as you all know, is full of examples where important politicians, President of the United States, has taken very unpopular decisions, which history has proved to have been correct. How to want to compare ourselves to the national government? But according to the second idea, of course, every two years, you have the chance to replace your representatives if you wish. But I do subscribe to the theory that all of us up here are simply elected to do what we feel is best for this community, and not necessarily, or not assume, that even this room, when it was full of people, may not be representative of the community. I have to do what I think is right, and again, I invite all of you, if you disagree, then you can vote for somebody else next year. Thank you.
Counselor Clett.
A couple of things. The first thing, I received an email from a member of the public. Mr. Salamon, this is addressed to you. The, the email came to me, and the individual is asking for some assistance. She indicates that for the past two months, TillCon has been working from 8:00 PM until 4:00 AM, that they hear the trucks backing up, dumping, banging trucks and whatever else, and that it's been most interruptive to their sleep at night. She's asking, apparently the police have been called, and I'm not sure what we use for an indicator to regulate that, the business that is going on between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00. She's asking for our help and our assistance, and I'm wondering if you could get some information and get back to us on what is actually going on over there? That's the first thing. The second thing, in terms of some of the questions, it's, I don't know why I believe that I've read this someplace or encountered this in the past, is that it has come up in terms of a timeframe and the number of referendums. And it's my recollection that if the referendum fails, that you cannot go back out with the same referendum, but have to change it ever so slightly, that you cannot put the same referendum question out a second time if it were to fail, that you have to somehow alter your plans to put it back before the public a second time. I'm not sure if I'm, if I'm correct on this, but some, for some reason, I, the number three is registering in my head, and I don't know if that is accurate or not. But I believe the information pertaining to not being able to put the same referendum question out, and Mr. Salamon can speak to that when I'm, when I'm done. I would like to make a request that, that the email that was disseminated to the public, I've checked my email, I don't have that email, that it be sent to us, since it's a matter of public record, since it went out to all kinds of groups, and to assure the public that we, I certainly didn't know anything about an email going out from a town employee asking people to attend tonight in support, which I find interesting, because I believe that it's very clear in, in the world of referendums, that even the public information that is put out to the public on this matter cannot take a position on, on one way or the other, being for or against, but must just submit the facts to the public so that they can make a decision on their own. So I am not quite sure why an email would be going out from a town hall member, or town staff member, to, to groups, asking that they come forward, and I would like to know who, who, at whose request was that email sent? Who, who was, who initiated that request? A couple of things that were not brought up tonight that I think are important. One is that the pool cost, if the pool were to be moved, and it moved, and I think it's pretty apparent that that would be somewhere along the way. I believe the, the, the price that was, we were told is additional $3 million. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor, to move the?
I think it's two and a half million. That's what's in the CIP.
And $250,000 is my recollection for the, for the playground.
Correct.
So that those costs are, will be in addition to the 30 million, and also, perhaps we might want to, you know, share with the public what we have already spent on the town hall, and I sure know that there's work that needs to be done here to move the building department. There have been some improvements within this town hall that have been done outside of the budget. One of them was that, if, for those of you that remember this, the police came out in that building, when they outgrew the building, and then a padlock went on the door that, down where the police department was, because there were, was some, something, I'm not sure what it was, I can't recall exactly, but there was some reason why, after they moved the police department out, and that referendum ultimately, second time passed, that they padlocked the door and no one was allowed. And today, we use it as, it's where the, the building department is, conference rooms and the new town council chamber. So there were, there have been additional costs above the 30 million that have proposed that have been spent to do some work in this building already, but perhaps the town manager, I'm not sure I'm right on the number of three, maximum of three referendums and the other
Can you respond to any of that, or?
I would like to talk, I would like to talk with bond counsel before I get back, but I'll, I'll either have the bond counsel or myself respond in writing to the town council on that.
Counselor McDonald.
I just want to echo Deputy Mayor Castell's comments. As a student of American history and government, both formally and informally, most of my life, I think that each of us comes to organizations like this, doing the best that we can to represent the needs of the community in the best way that we know how, based on the lengthy and, and very informative presentations that the construction manager has offered us, as well as the representative from council, from Booze.
Castle Booze.
Castle Booze. My goodness, thank you. Pardon me, it's the hour. I recognized this evening that for the small section of our 31,000 residents that make up the entire town, that the small section of folks that came this evening, that quite a number of them who commented, largely seniors, would have preferred the referendum moved to November 4th. Knowing what I know about this project, the construction timelines around breaking ground, when we need to break ground in order to be buttoned up for the winter, knowing what we would do by further pushing out the referendum to November, as far as the design phase and the time that Castle Booze needs on the design phase, and several other impactful pieces of information that have been shared by both of those parties, I felt that responding to the public and not sticking to the August 19th date was important. I heard you. I listened. But I also have to listen to other information that is being shared with us by the people who are involved in this project, should it pass a referendum. And I made a decision on my own, that happened to be along party lines, as to what date I felt was going to be a day when families are back from vacation, kids are squarely into school, seniors haven't fled south, and we can get the greatest number of voters involved in making a decision as to whether or not this project will move forward. So I thank you, and I shall continue to serve the community in the best way that I know how, based on the information that is presented to me, not by one source, not by a small cross-section of a community, but by multiple sources and information in the best interest of the community, not just here and now, but for the long term and for generations to come. Thank you.
Counselor Denunzio.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to address some of the public's concerns, I do not know specifically if there is a percent that registered voters that have to show up at referendum. I'm pretty confident to say that this referendum, that the interest and the magnitude of it, I think will be reached, and I do think, you know, we will get a good amount of turnout. The second question, as to when you can go back out to referendum, I believe it was either 60 or 90 days. I'm not sure, though, so I don't want to give a, I think we should wait for the bond council to come back, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Counselor Marakini.
Yeah, I just want to clear up one thing. It was, you know, brought to our attention during all of our presentations from the architects and construction managers, that in order to keep things moving, we would need to build a new community center in order for Parks and Recreation Department to function for the 12 to however many months it would take to renovate that area. Otherwise, we would be leaving 40,000 people without anything to do, that they, with the sources they like to use from our departments. Secondly, I would like to thank the town manager and his IT director over there, Jamie, for putting together a lot of good presentations. I know it's a lot of hard work for you and the staff, and I appreciate it. And thirdly, I don't know quite how to put this, but I'm, I'm a little upset at the fact that we couldn't come together tonight and, and figure this out. I'm confused as to how some of us could vote no for this, when I'm pretty sure they voted yes for it on the building committee. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Actually, Counselor Nagel, you haven't spoken yet. Did you?
I don't have a response to.
I'm not asking for a response. I'm asking if you have any comments.
Just that I think we should be clear that what was decided here by the majority of the council is not approving or disapproving of the project as it is, goes forth, that it is merely up now to the voters to decide one way or another what they wish to do. And I do think it's unfortunate that that choice is a take it or leave it proposition. And as Counselor Cohen had said on other occasions, and I wish she was here tonight to, to say it once again, this is, I'm paraphrasing more or less, this is what we have, and this is what you have to decide to take, all or nothing. I wish that scenario was different, and I agree with her. This is what we have. It's unfortunate what we have. And a reason why I, and so my fellow counselors here, agreed to the September 9th date, is that it is one that we thought would be doable, but still, I'm sure we still would much prefer, as the public wished, to have it in November. Also, Counselor Denunzio had, had asked the question about earlier, and it was pointed out by one member of the, of the public, what kind of effect that having a referendum later than August or September would have on the project. And if I remember correctly, the response was that it would be more difficult, but it, and it would possibly be rushed, but it was still doable. So the timeframe and when something needs to be done, it may be rushed, yes, but also tonight, we did hear the public's will, and the public's will wasn't, wasn't followed, at least those that cared enough and were concerned enough to, to speak on this particular issue. And yes, I did have something to say, but it took me a moment to, my previous counselors' comments, to see if I had a comment to make about that. Maybe I will later. Thank you.
Counselor Clett, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yes, I do. Just briefly, just for the members of the public, and I apologize for not researching this earlier, but the Connecticut General Statute outlines the procedures for holding a referendum, and you can find that under Section 9-369, and I am quite certain Ms. Lyons is going to go home and look that up.
One more thing. Go ahead. An answer to Counselor Clett's question about Balf. Usually, they open up if they're doing a road project nearby, so they're dumping, and they might even be making asphalt, but maybe we could find out, I don't know if there's a, a noise ordinance or anything for that. I don't know if John heard that earlier.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight, although I see most of you have already gone home. I know that we didn't make a lot of people happy. It was surprising, because I would have thought that the community center would have been the project that was supported, and town hall not, and if, listen to everybody that spoke, it actually was pretty much just the opposite of that. This is one project, and it always has been one project. In order to renovate this building the way that the building committee saw fit, to have it as a usable and functional building, they decided two years ago that Parks and Rec and the Mortenson Community Center would need to be relocated from their structure. We heard a lot of great ideas.
We heard a lot of great ideas, but none of them were new. The committee has vetted, vetted all of those over the last five, six years. We looked at several different sites, we meaning the committee. And I didn't go to all the meetings, I read most of the minutes. And they also looked at reconstructing the community center as it stands now. We could do that. Our construction manager told us if we did do that, we right now are looking at a cost of approximately $265 a square foot. They told us that that amount would double. So we would be spending more money, double the money, for the same space, and we know from the information that we received from Parks and Rec, that the space is no longer servicing the needs of the community, and it needs to be bigger. That's why the committee at that time decided to relocate the building. First, there was, I think, six or seven, maybe even nine sites. They narrowed it down, which took six months to pick the best site. So wherever this building goes, if in fact the voters approve it, it's going to take up some space. And I believe that the park, Milpon Park, is built for recreation. I don't think that this is going to take away from that. I think it will be an enhancement to the park, and I am definitely in favor of this project. I think it is going to be a good project, and I think when it's all said and done, I think the citizens of the town will come out and support it. I hope they do, but we will know September 9th. And with that, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, seeing what I'm saying. Aye. Stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.